To fill our spirit and hope with hope and prosperity. We ask that you protect us from any negative energy and help us to move forward and grow each and every day. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Bonnie. Wheelock?
Yes, ma'am.
Lethrop?
Here.
Kropa?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Crawford?
Here.
Klaus?
Here.
Max Power?
Here.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the regular minutes of, I don't remember the date, February 25th.
Is there support?
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. This is our opportunity for our first public comment. Bonnie, if you would read the rules, please.
Any person shall be permitted to address a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, which is required to be open to the public under the provision of the Michigan Open Meetings Act as amended. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the following board rules and procedures. One, any person wishing to address the Board shall state his or her name and address. Two, no person shall be allowed to speak more than once on the same matter excluding time needed to answer Commissioners' questions. The chairperson shall control the amount of time each person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes. Chairperson may, at his or her discretion, extend the amount of time any person is allowed to speak.
At this time, is there anyone wishing to come forward and make public comment?
I am June Thaden, 520 Highland Park Drive, Traverse City, speaking for NIMAC, the Northern Michigan Environmental Action Council. John Nelson, a longtime NIMAC Board member, the watershed council's baykeeper, and a member of the Grand Traverse Road Commission, cannot be here tonight. As best I can, this is what he would like to have said to you about our roads, and particularly the Hartman-Hammond Bridge. First, John believes, as I do, and as many of your constituents and the entire NIMAC Board, that the prime need is to support and maintain our current local road infrastructure. We have many roads needing work. Second, you all ran as fiscal conservatives. You should listen to your consulting group, TC Talis, who have estimated the current cost of a Hartman-Hammond Bridge, plus the roads needed, to be between $98 and $140 million. Where is the funding? You should consider all options, for instance, from Chum's Corners, using Bitner, Keystone, and Hammond Roads. Third, if you feel strongly, put a referendum on the ballot, as a mileage, giving price and pertinent details. Let the public decide. I agree completely with John's thoughts. This is a really big project you're considering. You need to do due diligence in researching all the options and finding the one that most reasonably solves the problem of another crosstown route. My personal conclusion is that another road resulting from a Hartman-Hammond Bridge paralleling South Airport so closely would just become another congested big road with many businesses. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else wishing to make public comment? Please come forward.
Matthew Scheck, 306 West Ninth Street, Traverse City, Michigan. I wanted to address the Hammond-Hartman, I think you're going to call it bypass. It used to be, I think this issue had been brought up before. I live in the central neighborhood, and I can tell you that the traffic situation really has been deteriorating over the years. It's kind of amazing to see. At first, it used to be just like at rush hour, you know, people getting out of Traverse City, the roads be pretty crowded. It's gotten so that a lot of us that live in the central neighborhood area, you really learn to alter your, you know, you don't go out at that time, or you try to take an alternate route that isn't going to be part of a traffic jam. For that reason, I'm all in favor of a Hammond-Hartman bypass, the bridge, if it entails a bridge. I do have a couple of big questions on that, though. It has, more has to do with funding. I'm not for any type of tax increases, and I certainly wouldn't be for it if it entailed the support of Prop 1 on the ballot in May 5th. I'm not sure exactly. I don't think anybody really knows what kind of funding is going to be coming out of that baby yet. But right now, I can tell you this, is that sitting behind a semi, or delivery vehicles, or just traffic that's just trying to go north as they're coming through Division at rush hour, is not a traffic calming thing at all. I mean, some people might want to call it that, but really, it's more like traffic congestion, and it's very unsafe. And Traverse City does need another road, especially for people that aren't making really Traverse City their final stop. And I think it would really aid in people getting to their destinations a lot more safely than what currently is now, and certainly a lot more, or a lot less time-consuming. And it really would give a break, I think, too, for the people that live in that area that's fed by Division Street. So I just wanted to mention that. The only qualm I have is, is in the funding, that's, I suppose, something for you guys to figure out. If there is, you know, we all do pay taxes, through gas taxes, things like that, for roads already. I'm not sure if that's all dried up, or if that's just another, one of those make-believe things that comes, so often comes out of Lansing. But I think it's something that you ought to consider. On the positive side, and if some millionaire wants to donate some money toward it, I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wasn't prepared to read.
Oh, come on down.
Don't let fear and common sense hold you back, Jack.
This is not a tough group.
Jack Robbins, 1007 Cass Road. I purchased 80 acres there in 1952. My folks are down the road. I've been there 83 years on Cass Road. I think I'm probably the oldest member that I know of on Cass Road, but that's beside the point. So I'm very partial to the River Cass Road area. I have, through my father-in-law, with Garfield Township trustee, my brother-in-law trustee, I got encouraged to participate for many years on the Planning Commission, roughly 28. Walked all through the big box intimidation and all the procedures that go with it. But, and I've worked for the Road Commission, and I've built many roads in the 11 and a half years I was there. We were in the prime of expansion. We always said, they got roads, what are existing out there. Cass Road was done in '48. I was in high school then, and participated on some help after they got it done. The road is not adequate for what is going on it today. We have the park system, I mean, the education reserve, we have hikers, we've got trails, and we've got bicycles. It is a death trap from Hartman Road to Keystone. It's amazing that nobody's got killed. That's just one, I mean, the age of the road, it's not, it's all we have, is a blacktop. There's no shoulders, a few feet. I realize what's happening. I realize, you know, the county got all that park, and I remember when it happened, and we thought we had the New York Central Park down that avenue where it is. It's a jewel in the Portman Valley. The nature center's settled there. I've been with those folks since '67. I've been with the Portman River Association since the '60s. And I have a lot of time, and I've participated with the city here, and city folks in Garfield all those years, and I give a lot of time to the public, and I'm still active in the nature center, volunteering, whatever. And I'm very dedicated to it, but we've missed the boat when we didn't get the first pass, if it would have went through, on Cass-Hartman. But you know, we've grown so fast, and there is so many critical terrain features of Traverse City. We're trying to save them, and you just, it's very, very, it's going to be terribly expensive. And we always said at the Road Commission, every road, we're 25 years behind at that point. But we were, we were busy, we were trying to make adequate, we, everything like this. And all our growth in Traverse City has been on the board's plate all the time, was so busy for a period of years. It was great.
Jack, I need to ask you to summarize, please.
What's that?
Please summarize.
Okay. If you was to put Cass, or Hartman Road across, I can't believe the design and everything that was featured before, that Traverse City does not have more, they should be, we, all of us should be brought up to speed, and not have a bunch of stoplights up at Cherry Center where the entrance is going to be. It's suicide, with somebody's coming down there 55 miles an hour and put us, you know. Why can't we shoot further and do something? But we've never wanted a bypass, Traverse City didn't. So it's going to cost you millions of dollars to put up a good road out there that would be satisfied for 50 years, but we're never going to get it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Next on, anyone else for public comment? All right. Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Something I know is going to make Commissioner Wheelock extremely happy, I'm going to add a couple of things. I am going to add B, under new business, the GFOA May Conference; C, under new business, community mental health appointments; and D, under new business, planning committee appointments. And with those additions, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Madam Chairman, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as amended, including B, C, and D, as you mentioned.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Crawford? Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent calendar. Bonnie, it's your turn.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one commission motion without discussion. Any member of the commission staff or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted, receive and file or approval, is approved by a single commission action adopting the consent calendar. Receive and file. Number one, correspondence from CAC dated 2/12/2015. Number two, correspondence from Father Fred dated 2/12/2015. Number three, correspondence from Goodwill and dated 2/23/15. Number four, resolution opposing Senate Bill 1123 and 1124 from Antrim County. Number five, resolution regarding annual inspectors conference, Antrim County. Number six, Northern Nexus minutes of October 30th, 2014. Number seven, Northern Michigan Community Action Agency minutes of January 16th, 2015. Number eight, Grand Traverse Planning Commission minutes of January 20th, 2015. Number nine, Grand Traverse Department of Human Services Board minutes of January 23rd, 2015. Number 10, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority minutes of January 28th, 2015. Approvals. The Public Health and Safety Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 11, Celtic Shuttle and Tours Contract, Senior Center Network Mystery Trip. Number 12, Classification and Staffing Plan Amendments, Grand Traverse Sheriff's Office. The Resource Management and Administration Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 13, Revision Bloodborne Pathogen Policy, Appendix B. Number 14, 2015 Holler Licenses, Resource Recovery. Number 15, Establishment of Wedding Ceremony Fees, County Clerk. Number 16, Cargo Van Purchase. Number 17, Airport Commission Acquisition of Property. Number 18, Approval of Board of Public Works Bylaw. Number 19, Prosecuting Attorney's Office Upgrade to File Management System. The Ways and Means Committee recommends approval of the following. Number 20, Garfield Township Tax Map Agreement. Number 21, Staffing Plan Amendment, Human Resources Analyst. Number 22, NG 911 Technical Consultant Recommendation, Central Dispatch. Number 23, Budget Adjustments. Number 24, Classification and Staffing Plan Amendments, Administration. Number 25, Parks and Recreation Appointments.
Does any member of the public wish any item to be removed from the consent calendar? Any Commissioners? Staff?
B 24, please.
I'm sorry. Number 24?
B 24, yeah.
All right. Anyone else? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item B 24.
Madam Chairman, I would so move to approve the consent calendar.
Moved by Commissioner Wheelock, supported by Commissioner Klaus, to approve the consent calendar with the exception of Item B 24. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. We have no special orders of business, which brings us to items removed from the consent calendar. Dave?
B 24. The, I have a note on this that says that pull the resolution and let them know the office specialist is a grade D, not C. When I presented it to Ways and Means, I had a office specialist, which is classified in their classification plan as a grade D position. I had it down as a grade C. That was an error. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay. When we make the motion, do we need to identify that change?
I believe just explaining that there was a correction, I'll explain there was a correction to the Ways and Means recommendation, and the resolution doesn't even say the grade, but just wanted it brought to your attention that it was an error.
Okay. All right. I would entertain a motion for Item B 24, Classification and Staffing Plan Amendment, Administration. Commissioner Wheelock?
Madam Chairman, I would move to approve the Administration Reclassification Plan with the correction as noted by the county administrator.
Is there support?
Support.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Department Action Items, Administration Finance.
Well, I think we're going to talk about the hazardous materials emergency preparedness grant.
We actually have Greg here, but this is pretty straightforward. I don't know if we receive this grant on a regular basis. It's a small grant, $1,340 in total. It's due back, we get very short notice, it's due back by April 7th, but it is for, oh, I wrote it in here, to update the SAR plans?
SAR Title III, and it's annual.
It's an annual thing, but we're, there is an in-kind match of $335, which is primarily at individuals' time back there. So I am asking for your approval or acceptance of the grant, and for the Board Chair to sign the grant agreement.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Board Chair to sign the hazardous materials emergency preparedness planning grant on behalf of the Board of Commissioners for 2014, 2015.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Kropa, supported by Commissioner Johnson, to approve the hazardous materials emergency preparedness planning grant. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Audit Engagement Letter. Dean?
We have our current auditor under contract for the 2014 audit, and annually, they provide us with an engagement letter, which I've included in your packet. Hopefully, it's, Carol probably found it interesting.
Riveting.
It's a required communication to the Board, even though it's dated 6th. I did not have it in time to bring it to Ways and Means, that's why it's coming to the Board. But it basically, if you scroll through it, it tells you what an audit is and what it isn't. It tells you what they're going to audit, and what they're going to, you know, what procedures they're going to apply to our accounting records. It's currently in process. I had one auditor start on Tuesday. They'll be here for approximately three weeks. It's clear that we are responsible for our accounting transactions and our financial statements. That's all explained in the document. It costs about $41,000 to do our audit. We do bid it out on a regular basis, but this is the last year of the current contract. One of the things that's really important, we receive a significant amount of federal funding, so as part of the audit, we have a single audit done. It's actually something that's required because of the federal money that we receive, and that's probably the area of greatest risk when they come in and do the audit, because there are numerous requirements that have to be followed. So they spend a lot of time, we have provided them with various narratives regarding our procedures, but they look at things in quite, quite a level of detail. This is also something that we are required to do, based on our population, we're required to have an annual audit. It's a rather old law that's on the books, maybe not that old, but it's a requirement of Public Act II of 1968. So it's not something that I would do out of just because I want to do it. It's something you have to do. So this is the required communication to the Board, and what we're asking, I have to go back to my...
Dr. Lethrop?
I'm interested, Dean, when they put you through this arduous audit, if they find anything they don't like, do they give you a chance to reconcile it, or do they just, or just get a grade right down there?
We discussed numerous things over the course of the audit. Naturally, we're going to have differences of opinion. I don't always win the arguments or discussions that we have, and they will propose, they may, from time to time, propose audit adjustments. They may say that, you know, in this particular case, or for this transaction, you don't have something properly recorded. Those are very, very rare, because I think we do a fairly good job. But, you know, the accounting that we do, we have to use a number of estimates. Estimating our tax revenue is probably one of the major estimates that we do. You know, we try to have the books closed by the end of January, but we don't settle with the local units until sometime in March. And you don't necessarily know what those numbers are, but they also, as part of their audit, will issue various reports that will come back to the Board, and they will sometimes identify things that we need to work on or improve. I do bring those back to the Board, so you're aware of what those findings might be, or suggestions for improvement. So even though this is done behind the scenes, you know, with, we work very closely with the Treasurer's Office and IT, there are, you know, reports that come back to you, and there's, if they find something that we're not doing right, I don't hide that from you. That's communicated back to you. So generally, it goes fairly smoothly. Our audit also includes our pavilions, the medical care facility. The Road Commission is a component unit. They have a separate audit done, but it's rolled up into the county audit report. And then, when we're done with the audit, we submit the financial statements to the state of Michigan. There's a requirement to file this with the state by June 30th. And we also submit the, we actually go one step further, it's actually quite a few steps further. We prepare a comprehensive annual financial report, and we submit that to the GFOA for their Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. And we hope to do that with the 2014 audit as well. So I don't know if that answered your questions.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Dean.
I would entertain a motion to authorize the Board Chair to sign the Audit Engagement Letter.
I will support.
I'm entertaining a motion.
Oh, you can make the motion.
I'm asking for a motion.
Oh, okay. I will make the motion to authorize the Board Chair to sign the letter regarding the audit.
You're swell.
I'll support.
Moved by Commissioner Kropa, supported by Commissioner Crawford. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Next on the agenda, approval of easements for Cass Road right-of-way, Road Commission.
Okay, well, the Road Commission's here, thank goodness. And we've been, I handed out a couple of items here, two, one right-of-way easement that actually, two right-of-way easements, and one grading license, sent to you under separate cover, was a cover letter from URS, and then right-of-way agreements that were a little bit more complicated than these. So we're... Chris Forsyth, Chris Forsyth asked the...
It was a name tag. We're waiting.
We have rules before the meetings whether or not a system's flawed.
Chris Forsyth thought that the standard agreements that the Road Commission had were a little complicated, so we're not quite settled exactly on how the wording's going to be. We think it's going to be somewhere between these two items, but we need to approve, at least in concept, and allow the attorneys to create the proper form for these easements. A grading license and two right-of-way easements, so that the Road Commission can construct the Cass Road Bridge and do work on the roadway. And I, don't ask me to explain what a grading license does, but Jim, you might be able
Jim Cook, Grand Traverse County Road Commission. And, yeah, the difference is, is the grading license, typically, a grading license is issued for construction, and so it's not a permanent right-of-way easement, because they're normally bigger than what we'll require long-term, once the bridge is in and all the accessories are in. So it's just, it allows us to go out and do construction and grading, and then the second, the right-of-way easement is for, it's the permanent right-of-way.
Right. And the reason for this is to get it, submit it with the MDOT submission, so that they can approve the grant?
Yeah. Our agreement says that, you know, at some point, once the bridge is constructed, that the county will convey a right-of-way over to the Road Commission to accommodate the bridge. the bridge. But, one thing that's required by the grant in order for us to submit for final approval is, we have to be able to prove that we actually have easement to construct and then maintain the bridge long-term, because the bridge won't be located, it's not within the right-of-way currently. So, we have to be able to prove, as part of that submittal package, that the county is okay with granting us a right-of-way.
Okay. We want to take, Commissioner Wheelock?
Madam Chairman, I would move to authorize the county administrator, I'm assuming you will sign this, Dave, not the board chairman?
The board chair.
I think we have Chris set up to sign it.
I would move to authorize the county administrator to negotiate the two easements as required for the Cass Road Bridge and the grading license for future signature by the board commissioner, the chairman of the board of commissioners.
I second it.
Discussion. Commissioner?
This is minor, but Cass Road is misspelled. Johnson.
I was having a senior moment.
I need bigger name tags.
You, on the end.
Yeah, on the first right-of-way easement, it says Case Roads. I didn't want to give them permission to go do a couple other roads.
I think the submittal date, is it April 20...
Well, I know, I was at the project managers' meeting. They said they wanted it, I said, I said, "We could do it either at this board meeting, or we could push it out another week and do it at the public health and safety meeting." And they said, "We'd rather get it done sooner."
It's going to be close.
I think that it all has to do with the timing of, you know, MDOT reviewing it, approving it, getting it out of the street, and getting the bids out. And I think the sooner the better, the better pricing you're going to get, the sooner you get the bids out.
Why do you ask, Bob?
I'm asking because I want to know what timeframe we have to work with, because we're going to have to sit down with the road commission's attorney and discuss this.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Roll call. Lathrop?
Yes.
Kropa?
No.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crawford?
Yes.
Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelock?
Yes.
Max Bowler?
No.
All right. Motion passes. Next on our agenda, old unfinished business, Hartman-Hammon resolution discussion. Commissioner Kropa?
Really old, really unfinished business, right. I probably, if you read in the paper today, this case, this Commissioner Johnson and I were discussing what's the next moves after our unanimous resolution that we passed in January. In the two months since we passed it, I have not received any negative comments about the county moving forward with the concept of a bypass. I think it was a significant time for people to know what we were doing. It was certainly out there. And I am wondering, I understand that the road commission is the principal agent in traffic and infrastructure in our county, but I'm wondering that these resolutions aren't just papers. They should have meaning behind them. So, I did initially contact our senator, being that we were going to be in Mac, Dunlop Lansing, next week, and thought it would be a nice time to bring it up on the agenda, because now would be the time to start meeting with people. One of the many persistent themes we heard throughout our discussion in January was, "This is a long process. Well, let's start now." And maybe it's a very small process, and maybe the county board plays an incredibly small role in it, but I still think we play a role in it. We passed tonight an emergency management thing. We prepare for the inevitable in this county. And I spent three hours of my day reading the TC Talis 2035 report. I don't know if I recommend that to anyone, but I did find some really interesting things in here. If our emergency manager was reading about something in our county was going to increase 219% in the next 15 years, he would probably start planning for it. Well, we have the numbers here in TC Talis and from the Grand Vision that talk about an increase in traffic on Keystone, which, mind you, is a two-lane road, and not even in discussion in the bypass, of 219.3% by 2035. Next to that is Hammond Road from La Fraineir to Garfield at a 206% increase in traffic. And I understand that these are just projections, but I don't think it takes a traffic analyst to sit at South Airport Road anytime between 3:00 and 6:30 PM on any given day and be stuck in traffic and wonder what we can do about this. So, when Bob brought that up, I started thinking it was a good time to find out what we can do, to discuss the idea. I did have one question, and I know Jim Cook is super excited to be here, because I'm going to ask you a question about something that you love, which is before you worked here in Grand Traverse County. In the back of TC Talis is sort of a historical update and catch-up for people that weren't here or weren't involved in the process when it was happening. And it gives the history of the Hartman-Hammon connector, a very condensed version of it. And it talks about the road commission in 2004 passing a road commission to pause the permit process for the Hartman-Hammon Bridge Project. And it states amongst a couple of different reasons. One of the reasons for the pause was that the MDEQ had suggested that the smart road alternative suggested by the Coalition for Sensible Growth was not adequately addressed or fully evaluated. So, they paused the process because of that and also in response to a flawed environmental assessment process. So, at some point, this project was completely removed, the old Hartman-Hammon project. I understand that a new Hartman-Hammon project is in your master plan. And I am wondering if the smart road alternative suggested by the Coalition for Sensible Growth, the rest of us know it as the Bitner Road alleged bypass, if that has ever been fully evaluated or addressed?
Jim Cook, Grand Traverse County Road Commission. That's a good question. I am not aware of any evaluation on Bitner Road. I have been through the files on different occasions, and, yeah, there was a decision to basically put the project on hold. And that was in 2004.
It says in here, 2004, August of 2004.
And I want to say...
There was a motion to pause the permit process.
And I found some documentation maybe in 2011, when our board made the decision to commit to the Cass Road Bridge replacement and go out and seek a grant. I also saw in there where they passed a resolution to support and move forward at some point in the future with a Hartman-Hammon Bridge, so...
Part of that, I mean, I understand, we're talking about a different bridge, we're talking about a Span bridge versus a culvert bridge and a completely different project. But, part of the things that I do hear is a lot of this discussion of a Bitner Road alternative rather than Hartman-Hammon. And I'm wondering if that analysis was ever done. We hear rumors or opinions or innuendo or gossip about it. I've heard just about it all, which is one of the things I am going to ask down at MDOT in Lansing, is once and for all, what, you know, what's the story on this? But, I am wondering locally if we've evaluated this, and if we haven't, could we do something? Because if you, I find very little opposition to Hartman-Hammon or the concept of a bypass. But, when I do, a lot of people say, "We already have a bypass. You just drive your car," although I, again, invite them to be on Keystone Road at any point between 3:30 and 6:30 on a weekday. But, I would like to have good facts to move forward with in making decisions, and I think this is a missing piece. Is this something that the road commission would be doing, or is this something that the county board can play a role in? How do we move forward on this?
Well, I think, I think, I mean, I think the county board can request that we take a look at that. And, you know, ultimately, I think it's our responsibility to go out and evaluate, you know, the different options. And again, you know, we don't, we may end up using a consultant to do that. I mean, because if you're really, truly talking about a real evaluation, I mean, it would, it would be labor-intensive, it would take time. But, you know, that's definitely something we can do. It's not in our budget this year. But, again, like you said, you know, if you want to do anything, you have to plan for it.
It was important enough to halt an entire multimillion-dollar project.
Yeah.
And then it appeared to be dropped.
And I'll just tell you from an engineering perspective, you know, I mean, anybody that drives that road on a regular basis, you know, there's some, there's some hills that you have to deal with. You know, there's a lot of property acquisition to deal with. When you start talking about widening a road and cutting down hills, you know, it becomes a pretty big project. Not to mention, you know, there is a river crossing there. And so, you want to widen that to two lanes, I'm pretty sure there's going to be a bridge required there. It's not, it's not a culvert. So...
Yeah. I mean, I'm one of the people that don't believe that this smart road alternative is possibly that smart. But, I do, I would like to have real facts from the DEQ regarding whether a Bitner River Crossing could even be widened to four lanes, being that it's a culvert bridge. We're dealing with all sorts of environmental issues, which was, as we know, the killer on the original Hartman-Hammon Bridge Project. So, if the smart alternative that's being thrown out by these environmental groups is a culvert bridge and potential widening of a road that can't even be widened, that would be a way to move forward together instead of fighting with each other about something that could never happen. So, I'm wondering where to get that information from, because I think it's important to look at all the options. And this is the number-one option that is listed in the regional transportation studies that I've read through. And again, the one that I've just heard people talk about quite a bit. I don't think it's a worthy bypass. I don't think it's a bypass. And on that note, I, again, go back to the traffic modeling that shows Keystone Road having a 219% traffic increase in the next two decades. I don't doubt that now, and I'm not sure where the cars would go. You can ask anybody who has to get their kids to Keystone Soccer Field at 5:00 PM on a weekday, that it's really difficult to get in and out. You wind the Cass Road Bridge to two lanes. As we know, we're looking at possibly 5,500 going to an 11,000 per day crossing on the Cass Road Bridge. You're dumping out double the amount of people at the Keystone Soccer Field. So, it's an interesting concept. I've read through this. I can't find anything that helps us answer this question, but I'm curious what, where we can go from there.
Well, what we can do is, I can, I can put it on our board's agenda, you know, or something to consider, you know, as we plan, you know, next year's budget.
Because you think, yeah, we need to have a big study done of it.
Yeah. It would be, it would be a significant study. It's not something that we would, you know, our staff, we're doing double the projects this year that we did last year, and our staff just isn't big enough to do that as well. So, you know, that's something we would consult out.
I'm not an engineer by any means, but I drive on Keystone Road quite a bit. And where the new exchange was put in, and the railroad bridge and all of that, where the big landscape wall goes up the hill, I have a hard time thinking of how four lanes could be put into that area. It seems like it doesn't take an expensive study to say we couldn't widen that road at that point.
Well, you know, the standard engineering response is, "There's nothing money can't fix." So, you know, the answer is, "Yeah, you can widen it, and yeah, you can deal with the hill, but it's going to cost a lot of money." And that doesn't take a study to...
Nope. I could have said that, too. I mean, I think that, as I read, as much as I've read on this, you know, Hartman-Hammon still comes down as the most viable alternative. And meeting US highway to US highway and state highway to state highway, it opens up the amount of funding that we wouldn't see for some of the other internal projects or north-south projects. So, I think that there's still potential there, and I'm hoping that we see where we can move forward.
Dr. Lathrop?
Hartman-Hammon, who ultimately makes the decision if it's built or not?
Well, I think some of it is going to come down to, you know, what kind of road is it? You know, I mean, is it a, is it a, is it truly a bypass? Is it an MDOT road? Or is it a local, you know, county road? So, I think that's, those are the things that we'll have to work through. You know, if it's a local road, you know, it's the road commission. But if it, you know, at some point becomes a MDOT bypass, you know, so we're talking about rerouting 31, I think now it becomes, it potentially could be an MDOT road.
Okay. And it sounds like what you're interested in is kind of eliminating this Bitner alternative, so we take it off the table and we're not...
It deserves the appropriate look.
Yeah. And wouldn't it be nice if we could do that without an expensive...
Wouldn't it be nice?
...study. Now, how do we do that? Can you do that?
Can we do it in-house or with a consultant? I mean, we can do it with a consultant, and I don't think it's, you know, I don't think it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. But, you know, potentially could be a $10,000 or $20,000 study for sure.
So, and so, your goal on that is just to get it off the calendar short?
The answers from the DEQ are the type of answers that you get after you've come up with a project plan.
Yeah.
And we're not going to be able to go to Lansing and say, "Hey, can you tell us if the Bitner Road Bridge would be environmentally safe?" They're not going to touch that, nor are they going to touch and address the concern, which is a legitimate concern, of widening a road that is parallel to a river. We're doing all of this stuff to return our river to its natural state and to protect our waters, yet there are some people that speak environmental on one side, and on the other side are talking about a four-lane road paralleling a river. And runoff alone would make the DEQ look twice to that. So, that's another question we can't ask until we have a project plan. So, Jim obviously knows a lot more about that and the process that you have to go through.
Dr. Johnson, then Dr. Lathrop?
Yeah. I mean, in that, I think it's in that study or in the Grand Vision that has the dollar figures.
Which one of the 100 pages?
Yeah. Because it says that Bitner was 181 million projection range or something.
Bitner has a projection in here?
Yes. And one of the, either that one or the Grand Vision has a price tag for Hartman-Hammon and Keystone-Bitner.
Okay. I did not have a spare 18 hours to read the Grand Vision.
And Keystone-Bitner, if I'm not mistaken, was about $40 million more. But, yeah, I mean, you got to move all the power lines, all the other stuff.
Yeah. It's really not a viable alternative, but it was clearly an alternative enough to halt a multimillion-dollar project.
And when we talk smart roads, it's very important to remember, 8th Street is a smart road approach to road diet. So, I just got to throw that out there, that, you know, I don't know. I think there's, it's an oxymoron when you talk smart roads. The, you know, our big factor will be cost, obviously, when we know either way we go, where we're going to get the funds. I mean, is it possible to get that as an MDOT road? I mean, that would probably help get a lot of funding.
Yeah. You know, I mean, at this point, you know, I think it's all, you know, anything's possible. I mean, and, you know, and I know there's a concern about, you know, where do the funds come from? And the reality is, is, I mean, it doesn't matter which option we pick. It's not going to be done with, it's not going to be done with our general funds. It's not going to be done with millage dollars. It's, you know, it's going to be funds coming from somewhere else. I mean, it, you know, and so, hopefully, you know, hopefully, that would be the state of Michigan.
And I guess, to tag along, though, I mean, what's our next step? You know, part of the reason I wanted this discussion was, yeah, we passed a resolution in support, but so what? I mean, we want to move into, what's the next step? What do you need from us to get the process going?
Well, I think, I mean, I can go back to our board and ask them to, you know, put on the agenda. I mean, we can either ask them to add it to tomorrow's night's meeting, or we can just put it on the agenda for the April meeting and just simply ask the question. You know, I mean, where are we going with this project, and is now the time to, you know, start evaluating options?
Yeah. Because, I mean, I think it's time. I mean, if you had, if we had enough money to repave every stinking road we got here, that's not the issue. The issue is, the roads are not designed for the traffic they have. So, if you redesigned South Airport, yeah, that'd be great, too. But then you're talking six lanes of traffic and everything else, and where would you go with that? So...
Into the next...
And the other thing I got to say, just as a comment, is, I'm not going to build, and this is for the general public that's listening, the environmentalist bullies, as they call them, I know that's a great term, but I'm not going to build or approve something that's going to harm the environment. There is a smart way that we can do this. I mean, you can't tell me that we cannot build something environmentally sound that would cross that. I mean, if it's that delicate, we shouldn't even be walking around it. You know, I mean, I'm tired of hearing about that part of it, that no matter what, you bring this up, and it's all no's, 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 and we don't even really have a true vision of it yet, but by golly, you can't build it. So, I just had to say that.
But, it's amazing that there is such strong support for a bridge one mile away that's crossing the same delicate, fragile flower of a river.
And no...
And it's just fine, but we cannot suggest a river crossing a mile away, because that's going to harm the entire thing.
Dr. Lathrop?
Well, you guys just don't love the bats. That's your problem. I'm just, I'm thinking that the next step would be with you guys, putting it on your radar and trying to eliminate these two alternatives, because it seems so obvious that Hartman-Hammon is really better than the alternatives in some official way, so we can approach the state. I'm sure this is going to take some time. I don't think it'll have... I don't think it'll happen in two years. I'm thinking five, six years. So, yeah, I'd like to see us answer some questions, get it going.
Commissioner Wheelock?
Well, I think, you know, I think we all agree that we need to move forward with this conversation. You know, I'm not exactly sure what the steps, which step is next, you know. I think a couple of things that you need, you know, at least in my mind. If you talk about a bypass, you don't bring traffic all the way to Traverse City and then take it up Cass-Hartman Road. That's not a bypass. That's going to serve the industrial parks off Hammond Road and Hartman Road, but it's truly not a bypass. If you want to take traffic around Traverse City, you get down, you know, at least down to Bightner Road or further south down to the S-Curve north of Buckley, and you take them across the South Boardman. Then you've created a bypass, you know. It's not a bypass as long as you continue to bring them into Traverse City on one end or the other. You know, back a few years ago, we looked at a so-called bypass. It brought down Gray Road and across Doug Gallagher's and comes down around and hit Hartman and Hammond and connected them together, and then ended up out to Bates Road. And then, and then they took them back down to Acme in order to get them back to the highway again. And it was like, what do we do here? So, you know, if you're talking about a bypass, it's different than what we're talking about here. This is a major corridor road. Whether, it's not, it's not a bypass by any sense of the word. It is strictly a transportation corridor. And we can make all the arguments we want. We can call it whatever we want, but it truly is a transportation corridor. It's not a bypass. The one thing I think that we'll say about the environmental issue is we need to do it right. You know, when we talked about this thing before, if my memory is right, it was basically four oversized culverts and fill the Boardman Valley with dirt. And I don't think any of us were completely supportive of that concept in the beginning. And, you know, at least myself, I wasn't. So, not that I don't believe that there's a way to pass traffic over that, over the Boardman Valley, but I don't think putting in four culverts and filling the Boardman Valley with dirt was the right way to do it. You know, I recently drove from Mobile, Alabama to El Paso, Texas, and all the way across the Louisiana Bayou, you're driving on suspended bridges, one after the other, hundreds of miles of it, through very delicate wetland that has been seeing traffic go through it for hundreds of years, 50 years now, over that whole interstate bypass system. So there are ways to transport traffic across the Boardman Valley that are safe. And, you know, I think we need to move forward with figuring out what those are and how we would go about paying for it.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, and just, I mean, our resolution did say Hartman-Hammon connection. So, yeah, it's not a bypass. I would love to see a bypass, but can you imagine how much that would cost? I mean, you know...
The problem is, is where would you put it?
Exactly.
I think the one word in bypass may be, because you're right. I think it's because we're speaking about it in the concept that it would be state highway to state highway for bypass funds. And I think that's why, I think, we think of a bypass as literally bypassing something. But I also think it got interchanged with the idea that we're looking at the fact that it's going to connect US and state highway to US and state highway, where they would reroute 31-37. And they call it a bypass. They're bypassing the city, the urban core, as they do all over the country on interstates and in cities. So it's true, it's not what we think of as a bypass, like when we do the Atlanta bypass on 75, but it is the idea of rerouting these federal and state highways, not only to remove the commercial traffic out of our city, but to be accessible to the funds for the bypass.
Would, I'm showing my ignorance about the anatomy of our county here, but a bypass, would that, that would necessarily involve Hartman-Hammon then? That would be beyond that.
Yeah, it depends on, you know, I think it's probably going to be more of a, maybe a local bypass.
Well, what I'm saying is, let's, he just brought up a bypass. If we had one of those, would we need Hartman-Hammon Bridge? Would we cross it somewhere else? Would it be better?
I don't know.
Yeah, okay. I, you know, if we're going to think out into the future, maybe that's one of the questions we should ask ourselves is, is even Hartman-Hammon in the future enough? Maybe we do need a bypass with a bridge further out.
Administrator Bendah?
Jim, I don't know if you remember the M-30 project in Midland?
Oh, yeah.
I think Fischer worked on that project. The, they got M-30 basically re-designated as a state highway. Used to get into Sanford, and if you, you'd have to go like two miles off this way and then cross the river over this old bridge and then come around another way. Used to be, M-30 went straight through, and they acquired all the easements. They got it on the project list for the, for MDOT and got it funded. And it's a process that you go through at MDOT to try and get that done. And I would think that the same process would apply here. You'd have to come up with plans that say, this is how we would bypass, this is how this would work. We want you to help fund this, or we want you to put this on your list of projects. And this is, you know, roughly how much it costs. And these are the, you know, the easements we would need. And, you know, the more you get that taken care of upfront, the better, the more points you get in the process. Is there more to that process? And, you know, I'm trying to think of the question that you asked is, what do we do next? Seems to me like federal and state funding would be the next thing that you'd want to go for, and you'd almost have to do that upfront due diligence and work to get that...
Yeah, one of the things that, you know, I discovered is, you know, again, I've been down in the basement and gone through a lot of files, and there are several concepts out there. I mean, they're not just a low culvert bridge, but I mean, there are some high bridge proposals as well, even with estimates. And so I think it's a matter of digging out the old plans and the concepts and, you know, kind of resurrecting what was planned originally.
Dr. Lathrop?
Well, so when you do put this on your radar, and you're going to look at the Hartman-Hammon Crossing, will you also, and you're also going to look at a Bightner alternative and the other things to hopefully turn when they're useless. But are you going to also look at a bypass that's even bigger and farther out? Will you be looking at that as well?
Well, I think that would be, you know, we work with MDOT. We work with the city. I think that's a good conversation to have, you know, with our other partners to say, you know, let's look at, let's look at the big picture and...
Should that be part of this discussion, though?
You're talking about another bypass, a real bypass?
Yeah, I'm saying, and I'm not trying, I'm not against Hartman-Hammon. I'm just saying that it sounds like there's an alternative, bigger and better, farther out, connecting two state highways with a bridge. Is that a competitor with Hartman-Hammon?
Well, I would say, you know, maybe the first thing is, you know, if our board is supportive and says, hey, we should, we should start spending time on this, you know, I think it's a matter of going back and looking at all those old files, because there were a lot of alternatives that were looked at. And I'm, and I would be surprised if something, some other kind of bypass wasn't investigated.
Commissioner Wheelock?
I guess one other comment that I'd make, having spent last weekend traveling through downtown Chicago, you know, and I hear people talk about traffic around here all the time and complaining about traffic. One of the things that we have to remember is we don't have enough roads to handle the traffic that we have, and we certainly don't have enough roads to handle the traffic going into the future. Hands down, I think all of us will admit that. And I don't care how many times you restripe Eighth Street, you can't move more cars down unless you find more lanes. But that's my own personal opinion. But one of the things that we also have to remember is that we are a destination community. We expect people to come here. We expect them to come here, and they spend their money. But then we complain about the traffic when they come here, you know. You know, I used to joke, you know, about being tourist season, you know, but why do they call it tourist season? They don't let me hunt them, you know. But the fact is, is that, you know, lots and lots of people come to our community, and we depend on them coming here, but yet we continuously complain about the traffic that they bring. And that is extremely frustrating.
Of course, when they complain about our traffic.
I think that's why it's our job to provide better traffic solutions for them. We keep asking people to come and keep asking people to come, and then they come and they go, oh, I can't get around town, you know. I, literally this week, Travel and Leisure and Huffington Post, both international magazines, listed Traverse City in the top places to go. We are kidding ourselves if we think that people aren't going to come. So they're going to come, and it's great. They support our businesses and all kinds of jobs that we have. But what they don't do is pay for our roads, which is a whole nother story. But we, we as hosts to this, if we truly are a tourist economy, we are not providing the appropriate infrastructure for the people that Pier Michigan is sending here. I would like to see Pier Michigan help fund us some sort of infrastructure projects in town. You know, if you build it, they will come. Well, they asked them to come, and they didn't build anything. So I would love to see Pier Michigan millions come to our infrastructure. But, you know, you're right, it isn't that we don't like the tourists. It's that we literally can't accommodate them. I mean, ask Central Dispatch about July 4th, 2014, when 600,000 people came to a town of 14,000. We can no longer ignore this. It's either we, you know, start moving on it, or I guess we just continue to have this conversation for 30 more years like they have about Hartman-Hammon.
Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, I think what you're talking about would actually be the second prong of this. I believe the Hartman-Hammon is needed. But I think eventually we'll need, we'll need to go out further and do a bypass. But I think that would be like part two of a longer-range plan to do that. Again, I think, I think the dollar figure it would take to do that would just, would shock a lot of people, but I could be wrong. But the other thing is, yeah, you know, when you talk about tourists and we might be time to try to talk to our legislators about tourist tax.
Oh, you mean the one I make the, when I actually say the words of Wayne Schmidt and at that time Howard Walker would sprint away from me? You mean that, that one?
I mean, you could add, you could add a small, you know, another 1% to the bed tax or whatever, get that, and they're still coming. I never book a hotel and ask, how much are your taxes, you know?
But you sure are glad when the roads are good, weren't you?
Yes, so you could even help fund it with some of that.
What I can tell you is historically, the Local Tourism and Convention Bureau fought absolutely tooth and nail against Grand Traverse County assessing a 2% room tax. About two years later, the legislation changed a little bit, and they could assess the tax and take the money for themselves. It didn't take them a heartbeat to pass that.
Dr. Lathrop?
Again, showing my stupidity, what about in Florida and other places, they have toll roads that help pay for things? Is that an option?
Bob Johnson Toll Bridge. The Bob Johnson Toll Bridge.
We put that on Cass Road, a toll bridge, we could pay for Hartman-Hammon.
Yeah.
Yeah, boy.
We don't do toll bridges.
I believe I paid five tolls each way getting to Chicago.
You'd have to do the Fastpass, if you've ever been to Florida or any of those electronic, so I know.
Do you have an indication now, Mr. Cook, that this county board would like the road commission to seriously take a look at the plans and let's get going?
We'll put it on the agenda for April.
Sounds wonderful. And in the meantime, we will be at MAC talking to Lansing.
Just so you know, I have talked to Senator Schmidt a couple of times about additional funding, so he won't be surprised if you talk to him.
He's well aware of my stance on the tourist tax. I've been chased out of rooms for about two years now discussing it. But that too, its time will come, just like the infrastructure has.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Merrick, you would like to make public comment? You are certainly welcome to.
Andy Merrick of the Grand Traverse Road Commission. This Hammond-Hartman bypass connector, whatever term you want to use, I believe, as one of five board members, is crucial in addition to the Cass Road Bridge. But it's not going to correct all the problems we've got, or that we're going to have. A gentleman spoke earlier at Public Comment that we're about 25 years behind. He may be a little more optimistic than I am. We've got some issues that we need to get traffic around the area. I wish I had a magic wand to wave to come up with all the solutions, but we need to start, we need to start acting. I believe we need to get the Cass Road Bridge built. We need to get the Hartman-Hammon moving, so we can get that built as quickly as we can. And we need to make sure that we do it in environmentally safe way, as I believe all of you agree. And I believe most of my board members, if not all of them, agree that as well. We need to be respectful of the environment, because that's what brings the people to Traverse City. We destroy the environment, we're not going to need the roads, because no one's going to want to come here. So we need to be respectful of the environment. We need to be fiscally conservative, make sure we're spending the money appropriately, and not just throwing it at a project that's not going to take care of the problems. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else before we move on? Okay. New business, ethics policy discussion. That would be me. The Record Eagle did call me about this. I said, nobody's done anything wrong. Nobody's in trouble. I said, but I just believe that there's a little bit too much, I guess, a lack of clarity in our county ethics policy. And I'm going to give you an example. Dr. Lathrop and I were at a MAC conference, and my husband was with me. And we were invited by a businessperson out for a very expensive dinner. We declined. And just for the record, I paid for my own husband's dinner. It was not, I mean, it was not county expense, but we declined. Quite honestly, I don't know if, the way I read the ethics policy, whether or not that would have been frowned upon or not. I mean, the perception in my mind is it's okay to go ahead and talk to vendors at these conferences, but, you know, expensive dinners out. I have, I'm a black and white gal in a gray world. So what, and Sheldon ran into this. When I worked for Shell back in the '70s, we had a drilling foreman, actually a drilling superintendent, and he was in charge of leasing drilling rigs from companies. And he accepted a private trip on a private plane. And the only reason that the company found out about it was the plane had a hard landing, and he broke a leg. And so Shell's ethics policy was like, the next day, you can't accept over $25 a year from, as a gift, if you have a business relationship or if you anticipate you're going to have a business relationship. It was very, very clear. And I just don't think the counties is. So what I would like to ask Mr. Cooney, if he would be so kind, as to make some suggestions as to how to tighten up the ethics policy and bring it back to the board for discussion. Anyone's thoughts? Commissioner Kropke, and then Commissioner Johnson?
I have a question for Bob. You know, there's no such thing as a free meal. And you have always been such a great, sound place for advice. And one of the stories you tell that I think is a great story is about turning down a meal on behalf of a software vendor. I mean, I always thought that it wasn't appropriate to do that, but listening to you say that hit home. And I thought about that, that probably, you know, when we read this, we talk about gifts and favors. You can't accept a gift of money. I mean, it's not hard to figure out. If somebody walks up to you and says, here's 50 bucks, you know, I want you to pass this, that's obvious that none of us would ever consider it. But I think that the most common thing that we do see may be our meals. I think that might be one. And I, I'm curious about things like a working lunch or a study session where they provide a lunch. Is that considered the same thing as an invitation out to a formal dinner at night, which is out of the scope of what we consider business hours? And how do you view meals? Is that encompassed by gifts?
Well, rather than answer your question directly, what I would suggest, I guess, first of all, I didn't have anything to do with drafting our ethics policy. I've never cared for it myself. I don't think it's real clear. What I would suggest is starting with the Attorney General's Model Ethics Ordinance, which, you know, they've obviously spent a lot of time working on that. It's drafted for local governments. It's kind of a fill-in-the-blank ordinance where you can pick or choose different clauses in it. You know, perhaps I could, you know, provide you a copy of that and the board could decide for themselves what they want to do. With gifts, for example, there's one spot where they have a, a number you put in, like the $25 a year at Shell. So, you know, that, that would be my recommendation is to start with that Model Ethics Ordinance that the AGs already prepared.
Because our county policy doesn't specifically address that, but the AGs does. And it talks about food or refreshments not exceeding a dollar amount, food or refreshments resulting from outside business or employment activities. I'm not even sure what that means, honestly. Is, is that? I mean, I think a working lunch is questionable to accept. And that's in the scope of your job and in business hours. I would say no to that. I learned a lot from you when you talked about that. You just say no. But that, that is probably the most likely thing will be offered. And I would like to see something that specifically addresses something that's a little more likely to happen rather than somebody walking up with a, a wad of cash or whatever.
The other thing the Model Ethics Ordinance does is it, it puts together all of the different ethics considerations that you might have. It includes nepotism, which isn't included in our county policy. I think we've got that out there in a separate policy. And contracts between employees or elected officials and, and the county, that's covered in the Model Ethics Ordinance where I think it belongs. If someone's looking for ethics rules, that's probably where you should go to find it.
Commissioner Crawford?
I think something that's also not covered in the ethics policy, but would go along the lines of, of meals possibly, is if we are invited to an event that has a ticket price, but the ticket is complimentary. So they're not buying our ticket, but they're not getting the money that we would have spent on the ticket. So that needs to be clearly spelled out. You know, are we, if we're invited to an event that's a ticketed event and our ticket is complimentary, is that acceptable? To be able to accept the invitation to do that, that is kind of a gray area.
It's true. It's a really good point. I think, I think, Commissioner Willack?
Well, I, I think we're, we're probably, you know, going on with this discussion where probably it's appropriate to ask Bob to review the AG's program, remembering that, this is from Mike Cox, so it's not, it's not extremely current either. You know, we, we end up with a lot of discussion. In our ethics policy, there's a whole section in regard to conflict of interest. I've probably had more discussions about conflict of interest in doing business with the county than, than anybody in northwestern Michigan. But, but the fact is, one of the other things that I, I guess I'm really impelled to, to mention is the fact that not everybody we do business with is, is trying to give you a complimentary meal or something to get something out of it.
No, I understand that.
We're, we're very fortunate in this community. For example, we do annually a wellness luncheon, for lack of a better terminology. Priority Health and a couple vendors have helped finance that for as long as I've been here. In the 16 years I've been here, they've, they've pretty much paid the bill. You know, where this is a recognition opportunity for our county employees. We do a luncheon thing, but the county board commits very little, if any, general fund monies to finance it. It's always been paid for by, by the vendors. So, you know, when you start saying, "There's no such thing as a free lunch," do we also turn down those opportunities?
Well, I just think.
I have no problem with reviewing it, but I guess don't, don't paint a picture that every time a vendor offers you something, it's because they want something.
That was not my intent.
It's the public's perception.
That was not my intent.
I agree with you. The vendors are, are not the issue, but it's the public perception. And if we had a policy that every one of us stuck to, then we could never be accused by the public of being bought out for supporting some sort of, say, a bypass.
You know, I just, I just think that there's room for improvement. I did speak with Mr. Cooney, who also thinks there's room for improvement.
I have no, I have absolutely no problem reviewing the AG's opinion and reviewing the county's and developing a new, a new ethics and conflict policy.
There's, there's no hurry. I mean, I, I understand you have a great deal on your plate, but are, are you willing?
Yeah, well, this, this won't be a big undertaking because I'm pretty much gonna take the Model Ordinance and lay out a couple of options.
All right. Maybe we could have it for our M&amp;A, if you, if that's possible.
That's fine.
For April. Everybody's okay with that? All right. Thank you. Next, item B, GFOA May Conference. There is a conference on performance-based budgeting.
Well, it's a general conference.
A general conference.
There's a lot of classes in there that relate.
That relate to this. It is also a networking opportunity, I think, to connect with other community leaders around the country who are in the process of implementing priority-based budgeting. And Commissioner Crawford emailed me and requested that she attend the conference. And I wholeheartedly support that. And this is just me. We have in our board rules for, it's been there forever, that we can go to NACO every year. I have to tell you, I, I don't think that makes sense. I've been a couple of times. I would prefer to go to a conference where we actually learn something and apply it to Grand Traverse County business. And like it or not, and this is again, just my opinion, NACO is geared more towards counties that are not in home-ruled states, that actually do have county governments, like a city government, similar to a city government. So I, I just have never felt real, that it's been a real good use of our education dollars. I, I looked over this course quite seriously. I believe this is a, a good use of our education dollars and we do have them. So I would like everyone's thoughts on whether or not you are interested in attending. I would encourage anyone that wants to attend to raise their hand. Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Crawford, then we will go to Commissioner Kropke.
I, I went through the list of the classes offered and there, there's implementing the budgetary best practices, the getting everybody on the same page, communicating effective finance, communicating the county finances effectively to your community and all kinds of things that I think would be very beneficial, especially heading into a different budgetary process. And as you said, meeting other people who do this, who are thinking of doing this, who, you know, for me, as an accountant, it's awesome. I'm so excited, but I'm an accounting geek.
It's not far. It's in Philadelphia. Commissioner Kropke?
I think we are going into this as partners with our staff. So I would like to see staff being offered the opportunity and not just commissioners, people like Dean. I mean, undertaking a new budget doesn't affect just the board. It affects the staff. So that was something I was interested in. On a side note, there's many classes on pension obligation. That's something I would be interested in. I have two women accountants. I'm not clearly anywhere as excited about it as Carol is. I'm about as excited as reading the TC Talis report today. But it's good information, good education, good knowledge. But I would really like to see the people that are going to be actually implementing it being a part of this as well. And I'm not certain who those players are, other than obviously Dean is an obvious one. But maybe that's his, his decisions. But that was my first thought along with, with that.
Dr. Lathrop, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I, I'm excited about it, like you, Carol. I think it's, I've been reading those books and I've worked with Tom Menzel, who is a living figure of doing this, not only at Beta, but also when he was mayor in a large city outside of Chicago. Does work. And it requires a different way of looking at things. I'd like to learn that way. And I do agree that staff should be there. You, I think for it to work, you have to have absolutely buy-in by the administrator and your staff, or it won't work. Also, it's not just us. It's the community. And they will teach us techniques and how to go out in the community and that kind of thing. So we're gonna be getting some help with, by Mike Muha. And I think the, we'll probably meet with him and talk with him there. And so I think it's a perfect dovetail for what we are starting to do new.
Dean, you got any thoughts? Have you looked at it at all?
Well, first, the GFOA, their annual conferences, I've gone to two of them. I don't go on an annual basis, but they are very well, they're, they're good conferences. I mean, you, you can learn a lot. They'll keep you busy. I mean, there's, there are a lot of things to, to choose from. And it's worth your while to go. I mean, Carol, obviously, because of her background, pension bonds? I haven't looked at that.
There are several of them regarding communities with pension debt. And that's something that I wholeheartedly admit I don't have a good working background in, being a private sector business owner. So that's something that I think is really important because that's a piece of our budgeting puzzle.
There, I'm, I'm glad that you were interested, Commissioner Crawford. It'd be very worthwhile. I, I haven't made any determination yet. I, you know, I follow Dave's lead. We're, we're gonna work with you to work with the GFOA and.
Can't let them know more than we do.
There's, there's, there are other classes that are offered, not, not just the financial classes. We've said that needs to go along with our strategic plan. There's a very specific strategic planning class, how to align your budget with your strategic plan.
That would be for me.
And using data to, to drive what you do, how to get the data, things like that. So I really do think that it'd be very beneficial. Not just for finance people, for, for anybody to learn, just the general, for non-finance people to learn how it's done, how, how all this happens.
We have the money in our budget, so if I'm hearing commissioners correctly.
I would suggest that each commissioner be given the opportunity to review the information. Try, I don't remember what the deadline was. I read.
It's April 7th.
So we have, you know, a week and a half to get, decide what.
And I've got the, in order to get the really low room rates, because they have blocks of rooms, I've got the, I got the 800 number today. Dr. Johnson?
Well, I, I'm looking at the website now. There is a first-time scholarship.
No, you have to be an active member of GFOA for a year before you can get that. I looked at that.
It's May 31st to June 3rd.
Yeah. May 31st to June.
I would like to go on May 29th. There's some extra classes ahead of time.
Carol would want to leave and go May 29th because there are some specific accounting classes that she would attend. But I agree, I think each commissioner needs to take a peek and decide what he or she is interested in attending. And get with Chris Kramer and let her know. We will, minimally, we will at least get our fees in by May, or April 7th, which I believe is the deadline. Is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Moving on, community mental health appointments. We have one opening on the Community Mental Health Board and it is for a community mental health consumer. We have one applicant and at this point, I will turn it over to Commissioner Crawford.
The person that has had this position for the past several years, her name is Nina Zamora. She's a very active member of the board. She doesn't miss a meeting. She's, she's a very good contributor member of the board. And she also has recently been appointed to the Board of Northern Michigan Regional Entity as our representative to that. So she has expressed interest in continuing on. I think it'd be very good to have her do that. So I would like to make a motion that we reappoint Nina Zamora to a new three-year term, beginning April 1st, 2015, ending March 31st, 2018, for the NLCMH Board of Directors.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Dr. Johnson. Discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same. Motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item is Planning Commission appointments. We have two seats open on our Planning Commission. We have four applicants. And as is our practice, our usual practice, the Chair of our M&amp;A puts together an ad hoc. John Syke would like the ad hoc to choose a planning, two of the four applicants, before their next Planning Commission meeting. So at this point, I will turn it over to our R&amp;A Chair, Commissioner Kropke, to set up an ad hoc.
This was appointments that expired December 31st of 2014.
Yes, and they now are expired as of the end of March.
Okay, and this is for three-year terms?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll set up interviews and all that good stuff for Chris Kramer. Well, as normal, I will ask Ron if you're interested, since you are a Planning Commission rep, to sit in on the interviews.
I would.
Okay, that would be great. And we normally have them during the day, but I think if that works, if that's not a problem for you. And then I had already asked Commissioner Max Bauer to sit in as well. And I think.
However, I'm perfectly willing to step aside and let someone else, if we have a volunteer.
Usually there's three, right?
There is three, so we don't have a quorum.
It'd be you, Commissioner Kropke, okay.
And then we'll just continue to keep rotating.
I guess the only comment that I'd make, I know there was some discussion about restructuring the Planning Commission, and I don't know where we're at with that.
We are going to be discussing that at some point.
Because I think that was, that was the reason we did the three-month extension.
Yeah.
That was the reason we did the three-month extension.
Have they, you said that there's four applicants, so therefore they, did they advertise, might not be the right word, but accept applications for this last calendar year?
Yes.
When this was gonna be expiring? Okay, so these people had applied quite a while ago.
And they're still interested.
And then it was extended. So all four are still interested?
That is correct. Dr. Lathrop?
I didn't know that we were considering restructuring the Planning Commission. When did this come up?
Was it last December you guys did it?
Six months ago.
I just forgot it then.
It was a while ago, Dan. It's okay. It probably wasn't all that high on your priority list.
And I don't think we ever really had much discussion about exactly where we were going with it. It was just a discussion, maybe we'd be better, our community would be better served by doing something a little different.
And, and that discussion, I'm pretty sure is.
It's still continuing, I think.
Is, is going to happen. But I, I really think that as long as we have not done anything.
In the interim, we have citizens who have stepped forward to serve and have continued to show interest in it. And I think we need to.
We can, we are still able to restructure.
Even if you make these appointments.
Absolutely.
Well, I guess that would just go forward to Chris then?
Okay.
Can I ask a quick question? The, the claims, was a handout on our desk, did we need to approve that?
We'll bring it back next month. I see that it's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Report. Anyone have any Commissioner Reports? I have one.
Public comment?
We're getting there.
Yeah, you missed it. You skipped over it.
Thank you. Second opportunity for public comment.
Matthew Scheck, same address, 306 West 9th Street. Different topic. I was at a couple of these meetings, last one maybe a couple of weeks ago and then maybe a month or so before that. And you guys were talking about the budget and Mr. Bendah's request for additional staffing. And I, I was listening to this and it kind of boiled down to, Mr. Bendah said, you know, part of it was, is a lot of the requests coming in from commissioners had put him into really a predicament of spending a lot of time at home and doing a lot of extra work. And I was thinking back, as I was sitting there, I was thinking as well, why doesn't the commission not ask for these kind of job extensions to his job? And you wouldn't be needing to hire an assistant? You know, I just thought that was the most prudent way to maybe accomplish that. And I was thinking maybe the whole idea of communicating effectively, that was mentioned that you guys are gonna be going to a workshop for, that could be maybe part, it might give you a little solution there. I don't have all of the answers on it, but these are just my observations on a meeting process here. And maybe Mr. Bendah could also learn unrealistic expectations. And, um, maybe Mr. Bendah could also learn unrealistic expectations, maybe coming in and, and, and maybe learning how to say no, or give a, a, you know, off-the-cuff statement that that's gonna cost you 60 hours, that kind of thing. Um, I, this is just my attempt to, you know, cut to the quick and, uh, just an observation that if you, you know, don't overburden people. There might be jobs that the commission can do by themselves, and Mr. Bendah can point them to. Here's, here's a good website, you do the research. Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment? All right. Commissioner Reports. Uh, Dr. Lathrow?
Uh, I, uh, am reporting that, that, uh, Tom Menzel will be retiring as the, uh, manager of Beta. I'm trying to find out the date here, I think it's in December. Um, he's done a wonderful job, and he sent out an email that describes what he's done in, in his work life, which is very impressive, really. He's been a very successful person. Um, we'll miss him a lot. He has groomed his staff, and probably one of those people will take over for him. I'm on that board. I'm, I'm assuming that's gonna happen. We've got two great candidates. But, uh, Tom Menzel's gonna hang it up for Beta, and he's done a wonderful job turning that around, uh, resurrecting it from the grave and, and making it very successful.
Dan, did you, uh, send a copy of that announcement to all commissioners? I didn't, I don't recall receiving it.
Yes, you know, I will.
That, thank you.
I'll do that, yeah.
Uh, any other committee reports? Commissioner Wheelack?
Well, committee report, notices, whatever. Uh, Chris and I reviewed the, uh, information for the Public Health and Safety meeting last week. I know that some of you had asked for us to cancel Public Health and Safety, and I told you I wouldn't do that until I seen what was on the schedule. Uh, there is nothing on this agenda that we cannot wait and do it in May. So, uh, I am going to announce tonight that we will be canceling the April meeting of Public Health and Safety of the Grand Travers County Board.
Those of us who are driving back from Lansing, you have eternal gratitude.
Thank you very much.
Well, you know, I, I don't believe that it would've been fair to cancel it until I seen what was on, the draft came in this afternoon, and there's nothing that we cannot delay to either our M and A or hold for a month and deal with it in April.
All right. Um, Commissioner Kropa?
A couple of committee things. Brownfield met this morning, and, uh, Dave was there. It was a good discussion. It was a start of trying to come together, and we will be joining each other in, um, several joint, uh, study sessions and meetings in the very near future, and we'll, I think you've already received notice on one of those with the city, regarding a Brownfield project in the city. Um, I, on my own, have met with John and Jean many times. They've gone above and beyond to help, uh, listen to my concerns, and, um, I look forward to sharing with the board new ideas for economic development tools that we don't use in our county. John Syke and, and Dave is nodding his head, because he knows we use Brownfield. There are so many other things at our disposal that don't require contaminated sites to receive economic development incentives. And since the contaminated sites are predominantly in our city limits, that has excluded a lot of our county. And we, uh, John and Jean both, and John was very interested in moving forward, in helping look at, um, supporting projects throughout our entire county. And that's the direction I've asked them to go in and help teach us about, because there's just amazing opportunities out there that will tie in with so many projects and provide so many jobs, and housing and property values that we can afford all throughout our townships and our villages. And it's, I think it's really exciting. Even Jean, who was feeling a little deflated for a while, she's pretty excited about this. Um, and we've spent a lot of time in the last two weeks together, so I've not only appreciated that, but I'm excited about it. Uh, the other thing is, I put this out to remind me of the names. I was at the Garfield Township Board meeting yesterday, and this is just really fascinating, so I wanted to share it with the county. Speaking of economic development, the MEDC offered a company located in Wisconsin a very substantial grant to move to the state of Michigan. After several cities, um, they were settled on Saginaw, and have decided now to make their home in Garfield Township in Grand Travers County. And it is a really fascinating business, and that's why I was excited to talk about it. It's behind the Lear Building, we all know the Lear Building on South Airport, and, um, they were dealing with some zoning issues, and that's why they were before the board speaking. So this is a company called Edit, and they're so above and beyond my head, I can't quite get there, but they're in the research and development stage of a product that takes, and it would be naturally grown juices, fruits, they do apple, grape, tart, cherry, and cranberry, and they use a patented process, it's the first of its kind in the world, to pull glucose and fructose out of juice. And what it does is takes basically all the calories and sugar out of juice. They do replace it with stevia, so it's a natural sweetener. It puts no espartame or, or anything like that back into it. And essentially, what you're left with is a juice that's about 10 calories. But it's juice. And he read the ingredients, it's like four ingredients, it's all natural. So this inventor guy is there, and, I mean, you know, hard to even comprehend what they do, but the process is quiet. Initially, it'll bring about seven to 10 jobs to Garfield Township, but it, they intend, I spoke with them afterwards, and they intend to grow and grow. There is room to grow in the old Lear complex, and they have such a love for this community. So they're bringing people from all over, they're renting houses right now, and are going through the process of building up this company, um, called Edit. Meyer contacted them yesterday, so we aren't looking at just small distributors, like Small Health Foods, we're looking at major corporations wanting to do this, and it would be utilizing locally grown food. They met with farmers last year and started this process. So, you know, for those of us that haven't had juice in many years, as I have, and none of my kids could have it, because basically it's almost all sugar, they have this way of pulling out essential elements of it, which I think is fascinating. On a side note, I met the owner and welcomed him to our area and thanked him, and the first thing he said to me, and, and I can't make this up, it's the truth, and I have witnesses, he said, "I have never seen this much traffic in my entire life." And I said, "We are doing something about this tomorrow at the county board." But they were pleasant and kind and, um, brilliant people. They are going through the FDA process. Interestingly enough, they said FDA bases their juice, uh, regulations on BRICS, which is sugar. So when you take the sugar out of the juice, so they're making the FDA create an entirely new approval process just for this concept, and then they hope to have it spread throughout. So it is really kind of a neat, um, side note. But these are, this is what economic development tools do, and MEDC is why they're here. It was a giant grant, and they could've picked anywhere in Michigan, and they picked Grand Travers County. That means something to me. Um, that's what we're gonna be looking forward and moving forward with here.
Uh, anyone else besides me? Because I have one. Um, the Parks Board, uh, met and voted unanimously to remove Kids Cove. Uh, sadly, it's unnecessary. It's a wooden structure, uh, it's rotting, it's, um, has, it's unsafe. The, the estimate just to fix the unsafetiness of it was $139,000. Um, so it was, you know, I, I think Commissioner Krop said it best in, in the paper. You know, we have to do what is safe for our community and the children, and we have to, uh, follow the law. And the Parks Board did that, and I wanted to let you know.
And just to make it clear, if somebody walked up to us with a check for $139,000 right now, we still could not renovate Kids Cove, because the Michigan safety standards and the National Playground Safety Act of 1997 said, if you substantially remediate a structure, you must bring the entire thing up to code.
And it, we just-
And the amount of safety, um-
Issues.
-flags that we had constitute more than a 50% change in the structure. So it wasn't even a cost factor, and I wanna make sure that that's clear. It was literally not in code.
I appreciate you adding that.
Yeah.
Um, all right. Any notices? Okay. We, uh, are scheduled to go into closed session.
Madam Chairman, I would move to go into closed session to discuss Straight Whitney versus Grand Travers County.
Is there support?
One other.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Krop. I'm sorry.
I have, I have, uh, also, I would like to give you a quick update on Carlson-Fuehns, that litigation. And I would also like to give you a negotiations update.
Okay, so we need, we need to note that the closed session will be in regard to Straight Whitney versus Grand Travers County, Carlson versus Fuehns, and a labor negotiation upgrade, I'm assuming with sheriff's deputies.
Correct.
Is there support?
Yes, support.
Roll call, please.
Here, oh, wait, no, yes. Yep. Yep. This is my fourth meeting to this.
Johnson?
Yes.
Crawford? Yes. Klaus?
Yes.
Wheelack?
Yes, ma'am.
Lathrow?
Yep.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Shall we should all throw our names in?
Yes, and-